Mr. Manager. Can you move Counselor Kennison from the attendee to participant?
She's in.
Okay, we are ready. Sounds good. So, welcome to our April 13, 2020 Electronic Meeting of the Concord City Council. We are meeting electronically due to the COVID-19 coronavirus pandemic in accordance with the Governor's Senate News Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04. Please note that in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order, we have provided public notice of the necessary information for accessing this meeting. Instructions are provided on our agenda on the City of Concord's website at conquerednh.ledstar.com backslash calendar dot A S P X. We are utilizing the Zoom platform for this electronic meeting. All members of the City Council have the ability to communicate contemporaneously during this meeting, and the public has access to listen and if necessary, participate in this meeting through clicking on the following website address zoom.us backslash J backslash seven oh three seven seven six five five three. If any member of the public does not have access to a website, our website, then may dial in the telephone number nine two nine two oh five six oh nine nine and enter the password seven oh three seven seven six five five three. Those who want to provide public testimony in the public hearing portion of the meeting, you are connected and you are connected to the Zoom website, you may click on the raise hand icon in the attendees section to make the request. When it is time appropriate, you will be recognized by me and you can provide your testimony. For members of the public who are participating by phone, you may dial star nine to alert me that you want to testify. We will not be using the chat function in Zoom for this meeting. Please note that the testimony is only allowed for agenda items that have been scheduled for a public hearing, and public participation is not authorized for the other items on the agenda. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call six oh three two three zero four six one nine or send an email to citycouncilmeeting@concordnh.gov. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting, we will adjourn the meeting and have it rescheduled at that time. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance, and when you state your presence at the meeting, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you during this meeting, which is required under the right to know law. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please. Madam Clerk? Did we lose Ms. Bonifat?
Counselor, Counselor Bouchard.
Here.
Counselor Kretovic.
In the room, I'm sorry, Tom.
Oh, sorry, no one's in the room. Counselor Kretovic.
Yes, William Kretovic, Jack Kretovic.
Counselor Fantasy.
Here, by myself.
Counselor Mattson. Counselor Mattson.
Hi, I'm here. No one is in the room with me.
Counselor Keach.
Here, solo.
Counselor Hatfield.
I'm here and I'm by myself.
Counselor Werner.
Here, by myself.
Counselor Kennison.
Here, by myself.
Counselor Nayan.
Present, no one else in attendance.
Mayor Boulay.
Present, no one else is here.
Counselor Todd.
Here, no one else is in the room.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Here, and nobody's in the room.
Counselor Champlin.
Present, and in the room with me are Susan Champlin and Madeline Champlin.
Counselor Pierce.
Here, and no one is in the room with me.
My tiles just moved, so who else did I miss? Counselor Danda Rice-Hawke-Clockens.
Here, and nobody is in the room with me.
Counselor Fantasy.
Got him, so all accounted for.
Okay, thank you, good to see everybody. So we have the minutes before us from March 9, 2020. Is there any comments regarding the minutes? Seeing none, or for a roll call vote, please, well first we have a motion. Okay, we'll try, this is a great lesson. I have Walter Nayan with a motion seconded by Hatfield. Counselor Hatfield. Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Let me do the roll. I'll do the roll.
Counselor Kretovic.
Hi.
Counselor Keach. We'll get this down. Counselor Bouchard.
Mr. Manager, in my desk drawer, just open my desk drawer, there's a, there's a
Bouchard, yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach already? Counselor Kennison. Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Mattson.
Yes.
Counselor Nayan.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice-Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Werner.
Yes.
Okay, and the vote is unanimous, the motion is adopted, except the minutes from March 9. So just before we start the consent agenda, I'm just going to remind everybody, so if you can, if you can mute yourself when you're not speaking, that's really ideal. Remember to, if you want to speak, I don't want to miss anybody, so I'm going to go fairly slow, but always raise your hand on the icon of participants, that makes it easier for the host to be able to identify, and I'll try to watch myself. If you're viewing in gallery view, and you wave your hand in front of the camera, I'll just make sure you heard of that. If you're the Zoom screen, so you can change your view to the upper right corner from the speaker and view the gallery view to see all the participants. And just one last reminder for the public who has come as attendees, if you have any question or trouble accessing the meeting, please call two three zero four six one nine or again, send an email to citycouncilmeeting@concordnh.gov. So with that, we have the consent agenda before us. I would just simply note two things with the consent agenda. Item number 30, it takes a two-thirds vote, so we're obviously going to do a roll call vote for the whole consent agenda, but I just want to make sure you all know that I'll declare a two-thirds vote if we receive that for item number 30 to be adopted. And the last thing I just want to note for you all, I'm sure you all had the same question I did, with item 19, which is the budget schedule, granted, we don't know exactly what's going to play out, so we'll review that as time goes on, but we'll be meeting again as a, as a city council body prior to the budget anyway, so we'll be able to make adjustments as necessary, but I just wanted to point those two things out. So with that, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda? Second. Heard Counselor Kretovic motion to approve, seconded by Counselor Grady Sexton. With that, does anybody have anything they want to say before we move on? Seeing none, Mr. Spell, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fantasy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yes. Yes.
Counselor Kennison.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Counselor Mattson.
Yes.
Counselor Nayan.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice-Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
Counselor Werner.
Yes.
Mayor Boulay.
Yes, being voted 15 to nothing, the motion is adopted, and item number 30 is received, the necessary two-thirds vote is adopted as well. That's instance two.
Your Honor.
Yes.
But I have Counselor Nayan do the pledge of allegiance for practicing all week.
Hi, you know what? I got so excited about reading all the things I needed to read, I forgot to pledge allegiance, I apologize. Counselor Nayan, if you'd be lenient and pledge allegiance, I'd be grateful.
Thank you very much. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager, thank you for reminding me of that, appreciate it. So that takes us to our public hearing this evening. Do we have our clerk on, or is she still away? She's on, okay. Madam Clerk, if you could read item 34A, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Title V Administrative Code, Chapter 35 Classification and Compensation Plan, Schedule D of Article 35-2, Class specification index for the engineering position classification title change.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Counselor, accept the new report regarding a position title change for the Concord Engineering Services Division to modify the class specification in Schedule D from traffic engineer to transportation engineer, title change will have no effect on labor grade or salary range, I recommend to support.
Thank you very much. Anybody have any questions for the manager? Okay, seeing none. Now it's fun, we're going to open this for a public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to testify? Mr. Manager, I don't see anybody, do you see anybody? Okay, so with that, we will close the public hearing, and Madam Clerk, if you could read item 34B, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Title 1 General Code, Chapter 1 Government Organization, Article 1-5 Fees, Fines, and Penalties, together with non-ordinance fees.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Under members of the council, annually, each city department revises and recommends key increases or changes, which would include reductions based on inflation, market conditions, and budget changes, while non-ordinance fees do not require public hearing, they are included with this process.
Any questions, the manager? Okay, before I open the public hearing, Mr. Manager, is, are you, is there something with your microphone, because you're kind of coming in a little bit garbled?
We tested two, please.
Is anybody else having a problem with the manager?
Mr. Manager, your microphone is on mute.
One, two, three.
It sounds like some sort of feedback.
Janice needs to be off. Testing one, two, three, how does that come in?
Much better.
Much better, yes.
It was not the city clerk's fault.
Absolutely not.
Never is.
At this time, we'll open the public hearing on this item. Is there anyone wishing to testify? Actually, you know what, I apologize. Counselor Hatfield, you had your hand raised, did you have a question?
I did, thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Spell, when you, when the various departments consider what the amounts should be, do they look at other comparable communities in New Hampshire and see what their fee schedules look like?
Yes, we do a market comparison, looking at communities very much like us, so if a, if a organization had the same type of services that we have, we consider them and look at what their changes have been over the last year, and where we are with market, the market, our market at least.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm seeing now for the questions from the counselors, we'll open the public hearing, and Mr. Manager, do we have anyone who wishes to testify?
I don't see anybody yet, sir, but Concord TV is on a slight delay, as is YouTube, so if we could just leave it open a little bit, so that people have the opportunity. I think when I watched the ZBA and planning boards, it was about 50 seconds or so delay, is it about that?
Is this why we love technology, but we dislike technology at the same time?
While we wait, everybody smile, I'll take a team picture. Hold it. Got it.
I do not see any, Your Honor.
Okay, so with that, we will close the public hearing on item 34B, and Madam Clerk, if you could read 34C, please.
It's a resolution approving the acquisition of land south of District 5 Road for conservation purposes and authorizing the expenditure of up to $12,000 from the Conservation Fund for this purpose, as recommended by the Conservation Commission.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
Our members of the council, in December of 2019, the City of Concord Conservation Commission approached Eric Ledbetter regarding the possibility of city purchasing a parcel identified by the city Concord assessors as tax map 68Z Lot 1, consisting of approximately 11.1 acres located on District 5 Road. Subject property is located within the conservation focus identified area, focus identified as Beach Hill in the 2017 Conservation Open Space Plan. The area is identified as a priority for acquisition because it is part of a large, unfragmented forest, has moderately high resilience value due to habitat connectivity and ecological integrity, contains productive forest land, and identified as high priority of the Merrimack River Conservation Plan, and is identified as the highest ranked habitat in New Hampshire and the state of New Hampshire Fish and Game Wildlife Action Plan. An appraisal was completed utilizing funds from the commission's FY 2020 operating budget. The property was appraised at $12,000 as of January 6, 2020. Mr. Ledbetter agreed to sell the property at appraised value. Conservation Commission voted unanimously at a public hearing on February 12, 2020 in favor of the acquisition of the 11.1 acre parcel, allocating $12,000 from the Conservation Trust for said purpose. Upon acquisition, the commission will manage the property, protect the natural resources, maintain, improve, protect, limit the future use of, and otherwise conserve and properly utilize this property as open space together with other land and water resources within the city, and be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Do we have anybody who had any questions for the manager? Okay, not seeing anyone, we'll open the public hearing. Looks like we have one person who's raised their hand.
Mr. Hours.
Mr. Hours. Yeah, I'm sorry.
I will authorize Mr. Hours to talk.
Sure, please.
Mr. Hours, you're on.
Good evening and welcome.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council members and City Manager, I appreciate your doing this, this is a little strange for all of us. My name is Jim Hours, I'm Vice Chair of the City Conservation. I thought the City Manager did a very thorough job presenting what, what the value of this property, the only points I would make is if you look at your, the plan, which is attached to your agenda, you'll see that this is on the very northern piece of a property we bought in 2010, and very close to the southern edge of a 230 acre parcel which you authorized the purchase of last year, and which we finally closed on in September 2019. So the gap between those parcels with the, once this parcel is purchased, will be about 180 feet at the closest point, we really want to tie these two properties together, so it's, the connectivity here is really the key issue, in addition to the conservation value, and this, the $12,000 is coming from the Conservation Fund, which as you know, is a fund generated from the land whose change tax penalty and earmarked for conservation. So we did vote unanimously to approve that, and I hope you will too.
Thank you very much, really appreciate you participating tonight. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Hours? Okay, seeing none, do we have anyone, thank you again, Mr. Hours, do we have anyone else wishing to testify?
No, sir.
Should we wait a few seconds for the television, or?
Well, Mr. Hours spoke most eloquently for over a minute, so that would allow other people to dial in, but yes.
Okay. And seeing no one else wishing to testify, we'll close the public hearing, and Madam Clerk, item 34D, please.
It's a resolution approving the acquisition of land north of Courier Road for conservation purposes and authorizing the expenditure of up to $35,500 from the Conservation Fund for this purpose, as recommended by the Conservation Commission.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
And our members of the council, in November 2019, the City of Concord Conservation Commission approached the Crosby family regarding the possibility of the city purchasing parcel identified by the city assessor as tax map 99 Block 2 Lot 8, consisting of approximately 31 acres located north of Courier Road. The subject property is located within the Conservation Focus area, identified as Courier Road in 2017 Conservation Open Space Plan. The area was identified as a priority for acquisition because it is part of a large, unfragmented forest, has moderately high resilience value, the habitat connectivity and ecological integrity, contains productive forest land, is identified as high priority in the Merrimack River Conservation Plan, is identified as the highest ranked habitat in New Hampshire and the state of New Hampshire Fish and Game Wildlife Action Plan. An appraisal was completed utilizing funds from the, the commission's FY 2020 operating budget. The property was appraised at $35,500 as of January 6, 2020. The family agreed to sell the property at the appraised value. The Conservation Commission voted unanimously at a public hearing on February 12, 2020 in favor of the acquisition of the 31-plus acre parcel, allocating $35,500 from the Conservation Fund for said purpose. Upon acquisition, the commission will manage the property, protect the natural resources, maintain the existing West End Farm Trail, maintain, improve, protect, limit the future use of, and otherwise conserve, and properly utilize this property as an open space together with other land and water resources within the city, glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager, does anybody have any questions for the manager? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing and recognize Mr. Hours again. Mr. Manager, you're on mute, so I can't hear you.
Nope, sorry, Mr. Hours is on.
Hi, welcome back, Mr. Hours.
And I'll have to unmute him, sorry. And he is.
I'm self-muted. I'm sorry. I can, anyway, thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Councilor, and City Manager, and thank you for unmuting me. My name is Jim Hours. I'm Vice Chair of the Conservation, Vice Chair of the City Conservation Commission. This property became available because the prior owner, or the present owner, Maryam Crosby died, and her children would like to sell the property. They have very generously allowed the city to use the property since April 2011, when they allowed, or they actually signed an agreement to allow the West End, West End Farm Trail to cross the property, which had to be approved by City Council, and which the City Council did. So since that time, it has been a very active trail. The city has also paid and built a pedestrian bridge across Ashbrook. The conservation value, I think, is, was alluded to by the City Manager. The source of funds, again, is the Conservation Trust Fund. It's not coming from general funds. And the price is $35,500, which was the appraised value. At the public hearing, the only issue which came up was Rebecca Ross was concerned that the eastern boundary of this property, if you look at the plan, it actually belongs to the Ross family, but it is not easement property. And they were concerned that people might trespass on it from the Crosby lot, should we purchase it. We did not consider that to be a serious issue, at least at the present time. We've had the property for nine years. I've never heard of, I've never heard of any event like, any problems arising. If we do buy the property, and assuming you approve this, we will have the property placed and the boundary marked, and if the Rosses really want to, they have the right to post it. Hopefully, that'll become unnecessary. But again, we did not consider that to be an issue not to buy the property. And of course, always what happens if we don't buy the property, the question is what happens to it then? And I don't think it's, I don't, we don't know what'll happen, but it could, our public access could very easily be cut off by a subsequent owner. So we do want to be sure that the property does remain open to the public, and is why we're, aside from the conservation value, why we think it's important to maintain this public access into the Rosses. I would, the only other point I'd make is that the deschardens property, again, is a large city conservation parcel, which is right to the west of it. And so again, we voted unanimously to approve it, and hope you'll do likewise. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Fennessy, I think you have a question?
Thank you, Mr. Hours. Just had a quick question. You mentioned that the West End Farm Trail was a well-traveled trail in the city, and I was wondering, does the Conservation Commission keep stats on, on which of these trails are used, or the amount of traffic on them?
We have not actually, you know, kept numbers, but as you certainly can see, just from driving around town, the number of cars that are getting parked along trails is actually something we're, if this continues, something we're gonna have to attend to. The only other issue on the West End Farm Trail is, as you may know, the end up by District Five Road has been blocked by the owners there. So that probably has discouraged some public use.
Any further questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Hours. Appreciate you doing this.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to testify? Mr. Espel, did you see anybody else?
No, sir.
Okay, with that, we'll close the public hearing. And Madam Clerk, if you could read item thirty-four E, please.
It's a resolution modifying the elderly exemption for the City of Concord pursuant to the provisions of RSA twenty seventy-two twenty-seven A.
Thank you very much, Mr. Manager.
The Tax Exempt Policy Committee met on February nineteenth, 2020, and reviewed the information submitted from the Director of Real Estate Assessments regarding the existing exemption amounts for the elderly and blind exemption, the existing income and asset thresholds for the elderly exemption, and the existing veterans' credit spreadsheet depicting the same information regarding the elderly, blind, and various tax credits that the thirteen other communities have adopted that we compare ourselves with provided. Comparison is available for public review, and glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Counselor Kretovic?
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. City Manager, with regards to the public testimony that we received by email to the council, it is submitted under an anonymous heading. The person is selecting not to be identified. And my question is, how do we, as a council, have the opportunity to state that we do or do not have a conflict of interest? How does this provide transparency to the public? We don't know if this is a resident, or if it's simply the, the parent, which is the contents of the letter. How do we actually do that? I, I don't believe that we're supposed to have public testimony that is not actually submitted by an individual that names themselves. And I'm, I'm looking for your direction and expertise here, please.
So this, if I may, Your Honor?
Please.
So information came in. It was quite detailed in terms of the specific information that they were providing to, to promote their, their case, so to speak. And in dealing, looking at that, thought it would be best interest to not include that type of information because somebody could potentially prey upon that person with the type of data that they were giving. So it was really, it was legitimate. It was, it is a Concord resident. I didn't see it conflicting with anybody on the council, but just looking at it, I thought it was in the best interest to, and the person agreed that it was in the best interest of not to include too much, too much specific information where they could be identified and then potentially prey upon. Hope that helps.
Yep, thank you.
Counselor Kretovic, I would just simply add that if we were acting as a body on the individual requests, then I would have a concern. But the fact we're acting on the policy as a whole, I'm less concerned. But tip, but I think you're right typically. I don't like, and the council's never really entertained testimony from concerned citizen type, but honestly, you raise a good point, but I, I think unless anybody objects, I'm comfortable with it. Counselor Kretovic, do you have a hand up still?
Don't floor it.
All right. Anybody else have any questions for the manager regarding this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to testify on this item? I don't see anyone with their hand raised, but we'll wait a few seconds for television to keep up, I guess. Okay, Mr. Manager, do you have anybody? Can't hear you, Tom.
So I was checking one more time. I was finally trying to kick Mr. Hours off there. For zone good. No, nobody.
Okay, so with that, we'll close the public hearing on item thirty-four E. That takes us to our public hearing phase, and Madam Clerk, item thirty-five, please.
It's a resolution authorizing the annual appraisal of real estate at market value per RSA seventy-five E B. Public hearings were held in February and March on this item.
Counselor Nye moves approval.
And seconded by?
Counselor Pierce, second.
Thank you very much. So with that, we have a motion who's been made and seconded. Is there any public, is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Yes, Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kennison. Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Matson?
Yes.
Counselor Nyan?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Weiss-Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
And with that, the motion is adopted. Item thirty-five is approved. Madam Clerk, item thirty-six, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Title V Administrative Code, Chapter thirty-five, Classification and Compensation Plan, Schedule D of Article Thirty-five Two. It's an engineering position class specification title change.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Nye moves approval.
Counselor Kretovic, second.
Thank you very much. Motion made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kennison. Counselor Kennison?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic? Counselor Kretovic?
Still yes.
Okay. Counselor Matson?
Yes.
Counselor Nyan?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Weiss-Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
And with that, the item thirty-six is adopted. Madam Clerk, item thirty-seven, please.
It's an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, Title One General Code, Chapter One Government Organization, Article One dash five, fees, fines, and penalties, together with non-ordinance fees.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Counselor Nye moves approval.
Second. Matson, second.
Janice, you pick whatever one you wish. Okay, is there any, is there any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin.
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
Yes.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kennison. Counselor Kennison?
She's still muted.
She did? Okay.
I'm not muted. I'm not muted. Can you hear me?
It can.
Can now, yeah.
I have bad audio on my computer, so yes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Matson?
Yes.
Counselor Nyan?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Weiss-Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
And with that, the motion is approved. Madam Clerk, item thirty-eight, please.
It's a resolution approving the acquisition of land south of District Five Road for conservation purposes and authorizing the expenditure of up to $12,000 from the Conservation Fund.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion?
Counselor Matson moves approval.
Okay, I'm gonna give that one to Counselor Matson. Is there a second?
Second. Hatfield.
And it is seconded by Counselor Hatfield. Thank you very much. Is there any discussion? Ooh, I got a hand. Hold on. It's exciting. Counselor Todd?
I'm mute, Counselor Todd. Sorry about that. I hit the wrong button. I just wanted to say I'll be supporting this motion tonight, and I just wanted to thank the Ledbeater family for entering into an agreement with the city and the Conservation Commission for this important piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else. Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard. In here. Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counselor Champlin?
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Keach?
I'm muted. Yes.
Counselor Kennison?
Kennison, yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Matson? Counselor Matson?
Sorry, yes.
Counselor Nyan?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Weiss-Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
Having received the necessary two-thirds, the motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, item thirty-nine, please.
It's a resolution approving the acquisition of land north of Courier Road for conservation purposes and authorizing the expenditure of up to $35,500 from the Conservation Fund for this purpose.
Counselor Kretovic, second.
Who made the initial motion, pardon, I'm sorry?
Counselor Bouchard.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Bouchard, seconded by Counselor Kretovic. Is there any discussion? Counselor Todd?
Yes, thank you again, Your Honor. I just, again, wanted to thank the Crosby family for their generosity throughout this, and then also for the heirs working through an agreement for this important piece of conservation property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Madam Clerk, if you can call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counselor Champlin?
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Keach?
Yes.
Counselor Kennison?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Matson?
Yes.
Counselor Nyan?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Weiss-Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Having received the necessary two-thirds, the motion is adopted. Madam Clerk, item forty, please.
It's a resolution modifying the elderly exemption for the City of Concord pursuant to the provisions of RSA seventy-two twenty-seven A.
Move a provo?
Counselor Warner, second.
Motion made by Counselor Kennison, seconded by Counselor Warner. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counselor Champlin? Counselor Fennessy?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
No.
Counselor Keach?
Yes.
Counselor Kennison?
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Matson?
Yes.
Counselor Nyan?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Weiss-Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
Motion is adopted, fourteen to one. Madam Clerk, that takes us to reports. Item forty-one, please.
It's a Borough Road sidewalk project report from the General Services Director and the City Engineer.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manager?
And our members of the council, traditionally, we would have those two gentlemen do the report. Given tonight's setup, I'll do the report, and they're available for questions if need be. The request is that the City Council provide guidance regarding the placing of the final overlay on Borough Road, which is presently scheduled to occur this construction season, as it relates to potential funding and constructing a new sidewalk that the council, at least a member of the councils, has discussed. The administration seeks guidance from City Council on the direction to proceed. If there is support from the City Council for staff to initiate the investigative phase of this project, engineering utilized staff time. engineering utilized staff time, and we were, and the report says, including some interns. We do not have some interns this summer due to the economic situation, to develop, so we'll have to have staff do it. It may take a little bit longer, but to develop conceptual layout and cost estimates. A status report would then be submitted to the mayor and City Council for an upcoming meeting, December or maybe slightly later, and General Services would defer placing the pavement overlay scheduled for this construction season. So, the options for City Council to consider are, do not initiate the investigative phase, proceed with the pavement overlay this construction season, and have the Transportation Policy Advisory Committee recommend next steps, or have staff proceed with the investigative phase and coordinate recommendations with Transportation Policy Advisory Committee following the public information meeting and defer pavement overlay scheduled for the 2020 construction season. Glad to answer any questions.
Councillor Kretovic?
Thank you, Your Honor. This stretch of road and the adjacent sidewalk has been a discussion for multiple years under the Safe Routes to School for Pennacook Elementary School, and of course, everybody in that area is bused to the school. There has also been some conversation around which side of the road that sidewalk would go on. I think that at this point in time, it would be my thought that we would want to continue with the overlay so that we preserve the road and the paving that we've done thus far, and send the item for the sidewalk back to T-PAC so that they can investigate when it's appropriate to get some public input, because I do believe there is some concern about which side of the road the sidewalk should go on. This letter that we have before us comes from Primrose, but there has been conversation about the other side of the road for Millstream, and that we really need to engage the public, and that putting this off for the time being would be the best recommendation. Thank you.
You, Councillor Pierce?
Yes, I have a question for General Services. I'm interested in what the effects would be if we did delay the overlay. What would be the effects on Borough Road or its degradation if we did, in fact, delay overlay?
Mr. Manager? You gotta unmute yourself.
There would be no significant effect to the overlay as long as we stayed on schedule.
For those of you listening at home, that was our director, Mr. Chesley.
Follow-up again, it's Councillor Pierce?
Councillor.
Well, stay on schedule, I'm not sure what that means. It's scheduled to be overlaid this year. So, if it were to be delayed, what would be the effect on the road?
There wouldn't be a significant effect on the road provided the overlay was placed in fiscal year 2022 as outlined in the report. I wouldn't recommend going any further than that.
Any further questions, Councillor Pierce?
Yes. If the road, if the report was continued, if we continued to investigate and went through the process of the neighborhood meeting as Councillor Kretovic had mentioned, would 2022, if the city had decided, if the council decides to, in fact, go ahead with investigating the project, could the, I understand from the report that the sidewalk and road could be done together in 2022? Conversely, if the road is paved this year, it would be several more years, given road moratoriums and the like, that we'd be looking at, what? Four to five-year window before any sidewalk could be placed?
Mr. Chesley?
If you're to strictly follow our practices, that would be the case. I think a more significant issue may be we would overlay the road to the existing width that's out there. If we were to add curbing and sidewalk, the actual road width may be slightly wider in the final design. At the end of the day, I think it boils down to either proceed with the overlay now as contemplated, or to delay the overlay until fiscal year 22. So, engineering has sufficient time to engage the public, prepare the plans, develop an estimate, and council has sufficient time to raise and appropriate the additional funds to build the sidewalk along with the final overlay.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Keach?
Thank you, Your Honor. This goes back to what we talked about last month, and I'm just not very comfortable sort of going ad hoc in including different projects as we go along, and I think this is on the list of things that we should do. It's important, but I think it's a mistake to prioritize this for some other reasons. So, I think it's important that we state of the plan. If that makes sense.
Thank you, Councillor Keach. Councillor Hatfield?
Thank you. Mr. Chesley, the answer to Councillor Pierce's question, I'm not sure I heard it. So, if we went with option one, which is to refer to T-PAC to recommend next steps, when is the soonest that the sidewalk can be solved? Can you estimate that?
I can't really give you a precise answer, Councillor Hatfield. I think that would be a function of how long it would take the design to be completed, public consensus be developed, and move forward. I think historically, my recollection has been there's been discussion on having a sidewalk out there, but there hasn't been consensus as to which side of the road the sidewalk should be located. So, candidly, from my standpoint, and maybe short-sighted view that if we are gonna build a sidewalk, it would make sense to do it congruently with the final overlay, but we need to complete the discussion and either make the decision, are we gonna build a sidewalk or not build a sidewalk? And if we are gonna build a sidewalk, what that sidewalk's gonna be? The overlay in this fiscal year basically prompts that discussion point to bring that to final resolution.
Councillor Hatfield, do you have anything further?
I have, I guess, a procedural question for you, Mr. Mayor. So, if, I think I just heard Mr. Chesley say that we should defer the pavement, that we could defer the pavement overlay and have the conversation, and so, when you're ready for motions, I think I wanna make a motion to that extent.
So, my, Councillor Champlin and Councillor Todd, I'll be right with you in two seconds. My question then is, Councillor, sorry to give you the demotion. Director Chesley, the one thing I did not hear you talk about is, how much is this gonna cost? Because, I reckon, he just lost somebody. What happened?
Don't know.
Whatever to go.
I think Fred is sharing his screen.
Fred is sharing his screen.
Hello?
Hi.
Yeah, we're viewing Fred's screen. Oh, there we go.
We're clear now.
Let me try that again. Fred, don't do that anymore. So, the part I did not hear in Director's answer is, how much is the sidewalk gonna cost? And where we may have a desire to do it, we may not have the ability to pay for it. So, and from my perspective, you know, this goes into the capital budget like everything else, and when you start weighing priorities, is this the highest priority sidewalk in the city? Or are there other sidewalks in the city which makes a higher priority that need to be repaired and fixed? So, I understand the desire to do this, but I'm concerned that, A, is this the highest priority? B, I have no idea how much it's gonna cost. So, and lastly, if you don't wanna go ahead with the overlay of this, there's gonna be $125,000 not being used. So, I would highly recommend that we take that $125,000 and use it for paving that needs to occur this year. So, that's just, with that said, I'm sorry. Mr. Manager, did you wanna respond then?
I did. I just got my screen back. See what's going on. Would you like, Mr., if you do, if you can, conversation? I also have Mr. Cedarholm, your City Engineer, dialed in if you wanna talk to him too, because I think you were talking about what it would take. And I just may wanna make one point. We were gonna pave this road last year, but we held off because Liberty Utilities was out there doing the work closer to the Fishville Road section. So, I just wanted to add that to the discussion. Did you like me to add Mr. Cedarholm to the discussion, or are you okay?
If somebody has a question for the engineer, then we can add him, but we'll continue on if that's okay. Councillor Champlin, your next.
Thank you, Your Honor. I respect what Councillor Keach has said. It is prudent to stay on plan. On the other hand, and I also respect what the mayor has said. On the other hand, it seems, if I understand the process correctly, the process would be, in fact, to try to reach consensus on, you know, for example, which side of the street the sidewalk should be placed on. And I'm sure that the cost of the project would come up in that discussion. If we were in the position to take that pause, do that legwork, include T-PAC, and come up with a mutually agreeable solution, then I think that would be a way to be responsive to, certainly what I've heard, which is the concerns of some of the residents of the area for the safety of children and for the encouragement of pedestrian traffic rather than vehicular traffic. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councillor Todd?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. If I may, a couple of points. First is that my understanding is that the reason that it's recommended to do the overlay project and a sidewalk project together is that there is a certain amount of cost savings. Granted, this is a new construction sidewalk, but there will still, there could still potentially be some savings with regard to the fact the contractors are already on-site, and the paving work is already being done on the road, and then you apply some of that extra paving work to the new sidewalk. So, I guess I would be interested in if Mr. Chesley or anyone else has any figures in that regard.
Mr. Manager, did you hear the question?
There are no figures in that, because you haven't designed the sidewalk yet. But your suppositions are correct. It would be a savings by having mobilization of forces. At the same time, you'd make sure that you designed a sidewalk to meet with the pavement that you're doing out there. So, you're correct. But I couldn't give you a number.
That's fine. Thank you. Follow-up, Your Honor?
Please.
Thank you. The other item is just that, Your Honor is correct that indeed, T-PAC does have a list of sidewalk priorities. The Bicycle and Pedestrian Subcommittee has come up with that, and I don't wanna speak out of turn and be incorrect, but my understanding, my memory, if it serves, is that indeed, this piece of sidewalk is on the list, but I'm not really sure exactly where it falls on the overall hierarchy of priorities. So, I think it would be prudent to have T-PAC review this with regard to all of the other projects that might be for the city. And I also wanna agree with what Councillor Kretovic said, which I think was entirely accurate, that this project has been discussed for many years, but for many years, there's been lots of disagreement about which side of the road to put the sidewalk on. So, I think it's absolutely imperative to have buy-in from the neighborhood, and however long that takes, I think we should take that time for that process. Thank you.
Councillor Nian?
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree in large part with what you had said earlier about the costs, whether it be this year or future construction cycles, it's going to be expensive. There's also operational costs that will need to be considered with annual paving and clearing. So, I do think it's better taken up in the capital project discussions later on.
Councillor Kretovic, I had your hand raised and then not raised.
Councillor Todd covered most of what I was gonna say. We do have a sidewalk accessibility plan which looks at the downtown Pennacook area, the downtown area, and it extends outwards for those highest-use, highest-connectivity sidewalks within the city, and that, as he said, the pedestrian committee is probably the most well-rehearsed in that sidewalk plan to be able to make these recommendations. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you. Councillor Keach? Okay, you can stop waving at me then. And Councillor Hatfield?
I think Councillor Kennison wants to make a point.
Sure. Councillor Kennison?
Thank you. It's my understanding that if we go this route suggested to go to T-PAC and so forth, what happens to that road in the meantime when we decided it was in such dire straits? So, I think it's a balancing thing. I hear about the cost savings, which makes a whole lot of sense. But if nothing is done to that road, what are we looking at in terms of deterioration?
Mr. Chesley's on. I suggest he can answer that question.
For the most part, the structural work, I'm gonna call it the structural work, has been completed with the binder pavement in place. The final overlay basically is the, I'm gonna call it the final layer of shingles on the roof. I had to make an analogy to a house. So, the house is in pretty good shape, but we can't let it sit out there without the final shingles for a protracted period of time. And that's why, in the report from David Cedarholm and I, it suggests a specific schedule that we, if we're gonna combine the two efforts under one umbrella, it should be done, including the appropriation of those funds not yet determined by fiscal year 22. If it starts to extend beyond that period of time, then I'm gonna have, I would have some concerns. But in my view, you do have that period of time to make the decision if you wanna build a sidewalk. So, that was the reason for the report, rather than just going forward directly with the overlay Uh, so that, that was the reason for the report, rather than just going forward uh, directly with the overlay that may preclude some cost savings uh, in the future.
Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Fennessy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't obviously have the same history that some of you have with this issue. I just wonder, based on the neighborhood's uh, inability to reach agreement on which side of the road the sidewalk should be on, do we expect if we set some sort of a hard deadline and, and, and refer this to T-PAC that there will be some resolution to that issue so that we can meet the construction deadline that I'm hearing from Mr. Chesley?
Mr. Manager?
This is, this has been discussed at city council level at least twice over the last dozen years, I believe. Um, each time, it, there could be no agreement on which side of the sidewalk it, it could be on or should be on. So the decision was made to go forward when the city council appropriated the dollars to actually pave it um, out there, not essentially the base course, not the finish course, that there was gonna be no sidewalk. So now essentially, after a few years of doing that and waiting for liberty, it's now time to put the uh, finish course on. As Mr. Chesley said, you can wait a couple of years, two or three years either way for that. It was going to be paved last year. It was going to be paved this year. If it isn't gonna be paved next year, it really should, the last year really should be the, the following year. Otherwise, you'll, will lose the investment that you made by doing the base course development. But city council came to the conclusion after much public discussion that there was no agreement on doing it. And I think there was a combination at the time of you wanted to actually put dollars into neighborhood road paving. Um, this would come out of the same pool of funds usually as the Neighborhood Road Paving Program.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Pierce, please.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been a great discussion. So just in taking some notes on where we are here, um, what I've gleaned from this is it's, this has been an issue for several years and there's been a, a call for a sidewalk. General Services says that we have until twenty-twenty-two to uh, repave, put the final top coat on Borough, Borough Road without causing any uh, irreparable harm. We don't know how much the sidewalk will cost, nor do we really know if there is a neighborhood consensus on which side of the road it should go. But it's very hard to make a decision as to whether or not we're gonna do a sidewalk until we know what the cost is. So there's this big circular conversation going on. So um, is that, is that a pretty good synopsis of where we are?
Looks like you're getting several thumbs up.
Oh, okay. Given that, um, a lot has happened in that neighborhood. It's, it's still continuing to grow. Uh, the sidewalk uh, does extend past Alice Drive for Sandwood Crossing on the south side of the road. So this, and I understand from uh, discussions, there was a, a loss of right, during the right-of-way and loss of property by folks on the south side of the road. So now the proposal is to go to the north side of the road, uh, perhaps move some utility poles. Again, we don't know what the cost is. I don't know how we can make a decision on this without making, uh, without knowing or having some idea what the costs are. So I, I'm sort of in favor of, of the second option of delaying for up to two years uh, the Borough Road repaving and let engineering finish their report, have the neighborhood meeting and be back to us as it says in the report by the fall of twenty-twenty uh, to see where we go. Because if we do pave the road, um, what, and we do have uh, an idea of what it would cost and we do decide to put a new sidewalk in the capital program, when could that be done, given that the Borough Road would be resurfaced? Are we talking in a five-year moratorium? I guess that's a question for you, the city manager or Chip.
Mr. Manager?
First of all, so it would not be the fall of twenty-twenty, it would be the winter or spring of twenty-twenty uh, when we'd be back with the, with the pricing and the cost. Um, as the report says, December, and as I mentioned, we do not have the staff to do that by December, likely. Um, there would be, what we have, once uh, road, the finish course goes on pavement, there's five-year moratorium on road cuts. We hold the utilities and ourselves to that restriction as best we can. Um, and I'm sorry, the third, was the third part to that?
Uh, no, I think you uh, I think you answered it. So what, what we're looking at is uh, if all things went according to plan, we thought it was a good idea and we thought the taxpayers could afford it, then we're looking at twenty-twenty-five or twenty-twenty-six before a sidewalk could be built. Is that true?
If, if I could?
Yes, please.
So I think what you, what um, between what General Services and, and Engineering are saying is that they would, over this winter, come up with a design and a cost. And this, and, and assuming the design would have the support of the neighborhood and the council would, would go along with that, you would not put it in this coming fiscal year's budget that you're working on, which is fiscal year twenty-one. You'd put it in the fiscal year twenty-two budget. So the next, so not, not this June, you'd be voting on it. Next June, you'd be voting on it. You'd have the dollars available there. So that'd be the fiscal year uh, twenty-twenty-two. And then fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, which would be either construction year twenty-two or construction year potentially, well, twenty-one to twenty-two. You could fit it in, in the next two to three years if you decided this winter that you wanted to move forward and do it. You would not have to wait five years, because you can't wait five years, because the road will not wait five years. You have to, there's a, there's a very small window which is closing.
Uh, just to follow up on that, I'm, I'm a little confused. What I'm saying is if we, if we went ahead and put the final code on Borough Road now, continued with the study, I'm looking, if, if I understand what you're saying, we're looking at five years after the road is paved before we could put in a sidewalk.
If, if the, if the finish course goes on in twenty-twenty, the earliest you could put it, the earliest based on your standards that we've discussed in the past would be twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six.
Okay, thank you.
Well, Mr. Manager, that, is that assuming that this is the highest priority of the council and it jumps ahead of everything else on the CIP?
Uh, in terms of, of sidewalks and, yeah, yeah, yes, absolutely. This would be a-
So in your mind, so in your mind, this is the highest priority of all the sidewalks?
Of mine? No, I have not looked at what, no, no, sir, it is not. I, I think you, you have sidewalks all around the city. I think what, what Counselor Todd, I think, said very well was you'd need to take a look at all the sidewalks in the city, the condition of all the existing sidewalks, and determine based on opportunity costs, if this is the best place to invest the, those dollars. If it turns out that this is the most important place in the city to do those, then you would make that investment. Then that you'd have, you'd have to decide, does that investment compare to all the other improvements that you need to make? So is it more important to put a sidewalk here than it is to, to pave West Street? So you're doing it.
Counselor Haffield?
Would it be appropriate for me to ask Counselor Todd a question?
Please.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Todd, your comments were very helpful. Um, and as a senior member of T-PAC, I, I was wondering, um, since T-PAC would have a role in each of the options that are set out in the memo, um, which one you think would be, would be better at this point?
Uh, thank you, Counselor Haffield. I um, I think that uh, it, to me, it, it seems like uh, uh, you know, T-PAC will make uh, advisory opinions based on uh, you know, needs assessment like the city manager just outlined, in terms of the new infrastructure like sidewalk improvements. But they also certainly always take in mind uh, cost factors. So uh, to my mind, I think that um, it is just me personally, not speaking for T-PAC. Um, but I, I think that um, it seems to me that option two makes sense, that uh, you would have a tie-in between the um, the paving work, the overlay paving work that you want to do and to maximize costs, you would then uh, that would then coincide with new sidewalk construction. So, but as the, as Your Honor points out, uh, that would uh, also involve a, a number of other issues. You know, mostly being, you know, does T-PAC in fact prioritize this sidewalk over other sidewalks in the city? And to my mind also, the other point is this will light a fire under the residents. This is do or die then. You, you're gonna have an agreement or not? You want this sidewalk put in? Where's it gonna go? And if there's no agreement from the residents, to my mind, that means that we're sort of back where we were, again, as the city manager pointed out, for the last eight years or so discussing this, but it doesn't go anywhere, because you can't get the residents to agree. So I think, I would say option two, let the, let, let the time flow to allow the residents' input, T-PAC's input, uh, delay the overlay, and then uh, that gives us an opportunity to see if the sidewalk is viable.
Thank you very much. Um, I thought that Counselor Pierce was on his way to making a motion, and so I would defer to him to do that if he'd like.
Before you do that, um, I have um, Counselor Mattson and Counselor Fennessy. Please. Counselor Mattson?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I just had one sort of a question, maybe statement. As uh, Counselor Todd had stated, that we, if we considered holding off on the final um, overlay, we still haven't come to the terms about whether or not the sidewalk is truly the priority. So it seems, if, even if we did lay off on this, uh, or hold off on the overlay, if for whatever reason, T-PAC and the, and the powers that be come back and say that other sidewalks are more important, I still believe, um, I guess I'm asking, would we be considering the overlay by itself at the later date? Because we don't want to lose the um, you know, this, the underpinnings of the street. So we would still have to put an overlay on whether that sidewalk ever actually gets a prior, prioritized or not. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay, that's all I want to know. Thank you.
Counselor Fennessy?
Thank you, Your Honor. My concern, if we adopt recommendation or option two, is that we will be creating an expectation in the neighborhood that this sidewalk is going to happen within the next, uh, well, not next fiscal year, but the one after. And if it's not actually a priority, then we may have waited and created this expectation and then we don't follow through on it. So at least at this point in time, uh, given sort of the uncertainty that I'm hearing, uh, I think I'm somewhat inclined to move forward with option one.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Keach, you still have your hand up? Did you want to speak? Counselor Keach? Okay, um, Counselor Bouchard? Can you unmute? Counselor Bouchard?
Hi. I don't know.
We can hear you now.
Can you hear me now? Great. Yeah, uh, anyway, um, I agree with, uh, I don't agree with o- option two. I agree with option one. Um, this sidewalk, we don't know the other priorities in the city. I, I only hesitate to go forward, not knowing what the other priorities would be. I think it's important to um, just to have a full, this just, to me, just came out of nowhere. And I think we should just have a full discussion on this. I don't know how much the sidewalk's gonna cost. We don't even know which side of the roads the neighbors will agree on. We know there are other sidewalks out there in T-PAC that are a prior, priority. We don't know what they are. Um, so at this point in time, I really would like to um, I can support option two.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Kennison, sorry.
Uh, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I'm yelling into this thing. Um, I would go with option um, option two for the simple reason that we're going to get more information, and I don't think it could be looked at as this is a promise that this is going to happen. If it goes to T-PAC and we look at it and come back to us and say, this doesn't make any sense, given all the factors we've looked at, then I think we're further ahead and we have more information. And in any course of events, the overlay is going to happen. So I would be in favor of getting more information from T-PAC. So I would support option two.
So just, Mr. Manager, just a quick question about Counselor Kennison's comment. The assumption was that the overlay is gonna happen. If we're gonna do all this investigation on a, on a potential sidewalk, who's to say that that hundred twenty-five thousand dollars is gonna last and not be used up for something else?
Okay, if I could, Your Honor, the, the next question was if you decide not to pave the road, do you want that money to go back into the pay, uh, the highway reserve and sit there? Or are there other roads that any of the city councils would like to have paved for a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars?
And I can think of ten different wards that all have streets that might want uh, something paved. Um, I, I, first of all, let me also say, I apologize. I'm doing my best to figure out, like, who put their hand up when? So if I don't get the right order, I, it's not because I'm trying to ignore anybody. I apologize. Um, I had Counselor Nye in.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I too will be supporting option one. Uh, the financial benefits of the overlay are irrefutable, and the sooner the better. Um, I do not believe this is the number one sidewalk project. There are many others. I can name three of them in Ward Seven alone. Uh, more importantly, I think the maintenance of the existing sidewalks hasn't even been discussed. This is a pool of money that is for neighborhood street improvements. I think to put this off is actually to do, will ultimately do harm uh, to that Pennacook area that needs the overlay. Um, and I for one will find another use for that hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars if we don't do the overlay this year. So I'm gonna support option one and I highly recommend and encourage my fellow councils to do so also. I think it's the best long-term financial investment in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Todd.
Uh, thank you again, Your Honor. Um, yeah, I just um, I kind of agree with Counselor Kennison's comments. Uh, the fact is that I think that if we probably, well, council's decision, but if we were to go with option two, that uh, that money could in fact be used somewhere else, but we would want to uh, it would come, this issue would come back to us, because the recommendation by city engineering basically be, you've gotta now repave this road. It's twenty-twenty-two, uh, or you're gonna do damage to it. Uh, if I thought, and we'd heard from Mr. Chesley that uh, delaying this at all uh, was going to do damage, I would certainly be in favor of option one. Uh, but I think that um, if there's an opportunity where uh, we let T-PAC weigh in, my understanding, the process would be, they'd be the first to speak, and so their recommendation would come first, I think. Uh, they would be able to give us a recommendation, and their recommendation may very well be, uh, don't uh, don't put this as a priority sidewalk, uh, in which case, I think the matter would sort of end there. Um, and um, in fact, depending on when T-PAC meets, they might be able to uh, give us that recommendation before the budget uh, cycle has ended. Uh, so uh, that, I'm just looking at this as the potential for a savings if in fact, uh, the sidewalk is deemed to be a priority in the city. Um, and then this new, new construction, uh, and you tie in the savings uh, with the road paving concurrently. That's, that's the only reason that I'm uh, thinking of giving option two a consideration. Thank you.
Uh, Counselor Rice-Hawkins?
I think Counselor Todd was just getting at kind of where I was going with my comments is, would we have time for T-PAC to provide some more recommendations on this sidewalk before we have to make a final decision here? Or is the construction scheduled so that we need to make the decision tonight?
Mr. Manager?
You're not going to get a price before the end of the budget session?
I may follow up. Um, I'm not so much concerned about the price, although I am concerned for a final decision, but more about T-PAC's priority. So would T-PAC, wouldn't they have some kind of assessment about where this falls in the master plan and where the sidewalk is in comparison to the needs of other sidewalks before we'd move forward?
Counselor Todd can best answer that question. I don't know if it's a priority listing. I, I don't know what's in the priority listing.
Yeah, that's a little frightening, but uh, thank you, Mr. Manager. I, um, no, I, I, I really, I don't want to sit here and guess, unfortunately, and I, I think it would be better to have a sort of, hit the refresh button on this and let the committee and subcommittee, T-PAC, uh, look at this issue again and, and make a recommendation in light of everything else that's uh, before them. Thank you.
Counselor Champlin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, in light of what Counselor Todd just said, uh, let me, let me ask a procedural uh, question. Would a uh, motion to refer to T-PAC uh, be appropriate at this juncture? In order to, I mean, kind of short circuit, I, I understand what Counselor Fennessy said about raising uh, community expectations. Um, I also feel that, that part of our job is to be within uh, reason, and, and as responsibly as possible, responsive to our constituents and, and their concerns on matters like this. And I know that at least some of the constituents that I've talked to in that area, really, this is a high priority for them. So get back to my original question, would a, would a motion to refer to T-PAC and ask them to indicate whether this is a high priority? And then make the decision at a subsequent city council meeting after that uh, uh, response uh, to take, you know, then make a decision whether to take action or not to take?
The motion's appropriate, but would, Mr. Manager, would the timing work for something like that?
So the, if I understand right, there'd be a recommendation back from T-PAC?
In terms of the prioritization of what it means after that? If T-PAC comes back and says, if T-PAC comes, you know, uh, comes back to city council and says, you know, this is five, six, seven, eight down the list, and we wouldn't support prioritizing, prioritizing the, this sidewalk at this time, then to my mind, that's an end to the discussion. On the other hand, if T-PAC says, yeah, we see, think this is a high priority sidewalk, then we could move forward with uh, a public discussion and active, you know, and the engineering study.
I, I would think that list-
I, I would think that list already exists, it would just be a matter of looking at the list, seeing where it is on the list, and then saying it ranks in the top two or three, or it doesn't. And if it doesn't, then the decision is made.
Then they should be able to get back to us very quickly.
We think so, there, there would be no need, other than look at the list. But I think, I think the issue is, if you want to have it paved this year while we're having all the paving going on, it probably can't wait too much longer, because the paving plants are opening up now. So you'd want to, you know, we get the companies to come in, they do all the work at once, and then they leave. This would be the case, I think, I'm sure it's pretty probably continental this year. And then they would leave, you wouldn't want to have them come back, because then your costs would go up.
Counselor Champlin, anything up there?
I asked, you know, could it wait until May? In other words, can T-PAC get back to us in May to let us know where it stands on the list? I would think so, the list already exists.
I think he said yes, but it'd be close, be tight.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
At least I believe that's what she said, right?
Mr. Chesley's still in line, he could tell you whether or not the paving will work, paving schedule will work.
Mr. Chesley?
It would be, actually, it'd be beneficial if we could get a, a quick, it would be, it would be, it would be close to wait till the May meeting. We're starting work tomorrow, as a matter of fact. So our paving contractor is mobilized already in Concord, so we'd have to move very, very quickly.
I have Counselor Bouchard and Counselor Kretovic.
So, Bouchard, I, I guess I'm, I'm still not convinced option two is the way we should go. I think we should pave it now, we don't have a neighborhood consensus. We don't know how much it's going to cost. And most importantly, none of us know what the other sidewalk priorities are. And I, and I think this, if we go with option one, it still goes to T-PAC and follow the regular route of all projects. But I think right now, the most prudent thing is to put the final overlay on and let the sidewalk go through T-PAC in the normal manner. And so I'm sure there's a lot of sidewalks out there that could make the same arguments for being the number one priority as we're discussing now with this one. So I'm still supporting option one.
Thank you. Counselor Kretovic?
Thank you, Your Honor. I've been a longtime member of T-PAC, all the way back to 2011. And while I don't sit on that committee now, this group reviews every CIP project every single year as part of the budget process. And with that review comes, what are the bicycle improvements we want to make? What are the sidewalk improvements we want to make? What are the intersection improvements that we want to make? What kind of development do we see that's coming up in the city that's going to need some transportation elements around it? This was reviewed last year. It was not reviewed as being a priority because of this discrepancy that's happening in the neighborhood. And so it was not recommended, when the road was redone, to do the sidewalk as well. But this spring, T-PAC is going to look at all the intersections, development, all the sidewalks and everything again, and they're going to make their recommendations based on the whole of the city. So I would agree with Counselor Bouchard. We go with option number one, they're going to review it, and they're going to make their recommendation according to the whole entire city and what the sidewalk improvement should be. And I don't think we should be jumping other priorities across the city. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Counselor Pearson and Counselor Rice-Hawkins.
Just a quick question, in the off chance that, that option two doesn't pass this evening, is there a way that this study can go on from engineering? Because what, what we keep coming back to is, you know, we talk about what happened four or five years ago, and one neighbor didn't like it, and so on and so forth, and, and neighborhood meetings can be tough. But we still don't know what the costs are. So if, would the study, could the study still go on so when we're having this discussion in subsequent years, we know what we're talking about? When it comes to the costs?
Thank you, Mr. Manager. I would love to hear you, but you can take yourself off mute.
All, all the, thank you. All the city council would have to do during the budget process is say they would like to have a study conducted on this, and staff would undertake it. That'd be probably the best time to do it.
Okay. All right, Counselor Rice-Hawkins, please.
I just wanted to remind folks, this was listed as a high priority planned sidewalk in the 2017, pedestrian master.
Thank you, thank you. So, Mr. Manager, I have a question. Where, what, what funds would be used to pay for the sidewalk? Would we, would we be bonding it like others? Mr. Manager?
I'm coming, I keep, my screen keeps going off. The, the, there's two, two ways you can fund it. Generally, what you've done in the past is you waited for side, to add sidewalks. To give you an example, Canterbury Road. So when Canterbury Road was last repaved, you added the sidewalk at that time, then did the reconstruction of Canterbury Road and the repaving of Canterbury Road. So you did it all at once. It's very much like Counselor Todd talked about. You had the cost savings associated with that. Every time we look at doing a road, you make a determination of going out and either repaving a road from, from scratch or doing overlay, you look at it and you determine whether or not you want to change it, you want, you want to add a sidewalk. Which is why when Borough Road was paved a few years back, the decision was, you had already made a decision not to add a sidewalk. So you could either take it out of the Highway Reserve Fund as you're going forward, or you could do a separate bond and do a 10- or 20-year bond, depending on the cost of the project, and pay for it that way. So there's, there's two sources of dollars. A Highway Reserve Fund is also where money comes out to do your road paving projects.
Thank you. So my, so this, this is a little bit of cold water, I guess, on everything. I, I am extremely concerned about what our economic future is going to look like here in the city and across the state. When I'm looking at state revenues, which I think are going to be considerably down, when I'm looking at people who I know are really struggling and very fearful of, forget about, you know, the daily life because they've lost their job, but what it means to how they're going to pay their taxes the next time the bill comes around. And when we're talking about a project that we don't have consensus necessarily, we know it's a priority, we, we hear that, but we don't have that consensus, we have no idea how much it's going to cost, and it, and it has to compete with everything else. I'm wondering, you know, when we just in a few short months, or less than a few short months, when we start going through the next budget for, for this year 22, you know, what, what is that going to look like? And are we going to be making reductions? Are we going to be putting, you know, a lot of these capital projects on hold? I'm specifically worried about capital, capital projects that include any sort of state funding or state match whatsoever. I don't know if we're ever going to, Counselor Kennesaw, are you walking? That is awesome.
My, my computer's going to go, plug it in, so I have to move.
Sorry, I just, my point being is that I'm really worried about, you know, money in the next budget. And so I, 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 what I'd love to do to the sidewalk, sure. I, I'm coming to the conclusion that, let's go out there, let's make sure we preserve the road and keep the integrity of the road, put down the overlay, like we usually normally do, and push the sidewalk off until we can get consensus. Because I, I'm fearful that we're going to be cutting back on lots of CIP projects. So to go out and make even hopeful promises for the future, I just don't know how that's going to, where we're going to be. I really, I feel very uneasy about the future, so. Okay, I have Counselor Bouchard, you still have your hand up, or you have your hand up?
No, I don't have my hand up, I thought I lowered it.
Okay, well, it's good to see you, Manager. Counselor Fennessy?
If it's appropriate at this time, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt option number one.
Bouchard, option, second?
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded from Counselor Fennessy, seconded by Counselor Bouchard to adopt item, option number one. Counselor Keach, you had your hand up?
On mute.
Counselor Keach, you're on mute?
Kennesaw has her hand up.
Thank you.
When I first joined the council more than 10 years ago, we made some really tough choices. We're about to embark on that again. So sidewalks are very low on the list of things at this moment, because we're going to talk, we're going to be talking about laying off employees, probably. In my opinion, I hope that's not the case. So we've got really big fish to fry going forward. And so I appreciate the conversation, but I think things are a lot more serious than a sidewalk on Borough Road. So anyway, option one, yes, thank you.
Counselor Kennesaw?
Thank you. Either option has its, its merits. And taking into consideration what the mayor was saying about the, the budget and, and potential problems down the line because of this coronavirus issue, that I, I will go for option one.
Okay. Anybody else who'd like to speak? Okay, we have a motion pending before us. Everybody clear on the motion? Okay, are you ready for the vote? Madam Clerk, if you can call roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boulay?
Yes.
Counselor Champlin?
No.
Counselor Fennessy?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
No.
Counselor Keach?
Yes.
Counselor Kennesaw? Counselor Kennesaw?
She's muted.
One more time?
Counselor Kennesaw?
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Matson?
Yes.
Counselor Nian?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
No.
Counselor Rice-Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
No.
Counselor Warner?
Yes.
So it passes 11 to four.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate the discussion on that. I think everybody brought some great points, I appreciate that, that was healthy. We are on to new business. I had two items that I wanted to talk about with the council, and if anybody else had anything. The first one is purple bags. I believe we have all received dozens of emails regarding purple bags. And, you know, I, I think that I put people in generally a couple different camps. The first are people who generally are concerned about the cost and are struggling to, you know, just make ends meet with job loss, et cetera. And so price is a, is a real consideration for some. Other concerns are obviously health. And there are people who are very concerned about going to grocery stores or to the convenience stores, or to pick the, or even, obviously, you can't go to City Hall because it's closed. And I compliment the manager who's recommended doing direct service to mail the bags directly to somebody, if you wish. I know that in my household, you know, we got purple bags, but we actually had, we ordered our groceries online. So there are options, but I truly appreciate, and I don't take lightly, the concerns that people have over the health of coming out. So given the two issues of price and health at this particular time, I wanted to raise a, a potential solution to the council to see what your, your pleasure might be. But I have looked around at other communities, I've talked to other mayors. I, I would recommend that the council suspend the purple bag program for the term of the, the governor's emergency order. And what I would do is, if we were to act favorably upon this tonight, I would suggest we start next Monday night, which I, or Monday, which I believe would be the 20th, which would give the community the ability to go out there and talk about what's going to happen, so people understood. But really, one of the most important pieces is that we're listening to, to the folks in the community, and we hear them. But we also want to continue, if we were to go down this road, to really, really push recycling. Because we have to be honest with ourselves, there's going to be a cost to this. The first cost is going to be a loss of revenues in the, in the purple bags. We just won't be selling as many, obviously. And the second thing is, I think it's probably human nature that when you're not using the purple bags, you're probably going to end up throwing away more things than what you might have in the past, that you might have recycled, because it's just pure convenience. So there, I assume, I'm speculating, but I'm assuming that our tonnage would go up a little bit, which will be a direct cost to us as well. The last piece is, is that, you know, we, I, I do know, on the other hand, that there are more and more recycle bins which are getting the contaminated sticker and not being picked up. Because what is happening is, as some people don't have their purple bags, they're trying to hide trash in with the recyclables. And so their, their loads are getting rejected because of the contamination. So for all those reasons, and probably meant that I haven't forgot, that I've forgotten, but I, I think it might be prudent for us to, to suspend it. And again, only for the period of time that the orders are effective. So when the order is lifted, then in one week, I would suggest one week immediately following that, to give people the week to go out and get their bags and to get back onto the, the process of purple bags again. The last thing I'll say is, I, I know with the increased costs and the, and the lack of revenue, I've asked the manager to run a few numbers, and with the help of General Services, you know, there's a real range, because we just don't know exactly what the cost might be, but it could be anywhere between $100,000 to $166,000, based on some of the estimates. That's real money, but I think that, given the times and the crisis we're in, it might be appropriate to do that. So I share that with everyone, I would, I really would like to encourage you to tell me what you think. But I think it might be worthwhile to move forward. So the first hand I have up is Representative Warner.
Representative, thank you.
You know what? I apologize.
It's less, it's less than salary, but it's okay. The promotion in other ways, I suppose. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the current date, as I understand it, for the governor's order is May 4th. I believe, and I think many of my colleagues do, that is a date that's going to be extended. I do not believe that we're going to be ready to lift that order on May 4th. And I believe the governor will revisit that within some matter of days. So I guess what I would encourage is additional financial analysis, maybe just to get a sense of what it could be through the end of May, because I think that's certainly possible in terms of extension. And I just want to put that on the, on the table for additional discussion in terms of getting a better handle on the cost in the out weeks.
Well, Counselor, thank you for that question, because that's originally what they did. And I said, you know what, let's go through the end of the fiscal year, so we can get the worst-case scenario.
Okay.
So the numbers that I, I gave you are very large range, I recognize that. But that takes you through the end of the fiscal year.
Okay.
If that helps.
It does, it's very helpful, thank you.
Next person I have is Counselor Todd.
Thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate your condensing this issue down to the core elements, because you're absolutely correct. I certainly heard from a large number of people who have various concerns about continuing the program at this time. So I, I will be in support of your recommendation. And I think one of the other reasons, and this is really just anecdotal, but I've also heard this from folks, they're seeing a lot more trash being dumped to the side of the roads and in various illegal places at this time. It's probably as a result of folks, you know, maybe not being able to have access to the bags. So I think that's another element that we, we'd want, obviously want to curfew, and maybe this would help. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Matson?
Thank you, Your Honor. I also wanted to say that I appreciate the, the idea, because we've, I've also heard from many people regarding the, the the idea, because we've, I've also heard from many people regarding the, the cost and the, um, the effect of them and these trying times, and so I will be in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Hatfield.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, and I also appreciate your trying to be responsive. Um, one question I have, I, I'm not in favor of this. Um, I think that the bags serve many purposes, and one of them is to not shift the cost of waste onto everyone else. Um, but one of the other purposes that they serve, that I think is really important, is that it's very clear that if it doesn't fit in the bag, you need either another bag, or you need to take it to the transfer station yourself. So I was wondering if you've thought about, um, you know, can I put my couch out now? And, you know, what, what, what will, what will the, the waste haulers do when they're going down the street and people are putting out, you know, just all kinds of stuff? Um, you know, is there a simple way to manage that?
So that's a great question. Um, so, uh, in considering all this, the, um, the department, General Services, the manager put me through a lot of questions. One of them is, how does this affect condominiums? How does this affect all these other things, including the bulk things that you're talking about? It's my recommendation that none of that change. That if you still have a bulk item, you still go to the transfer station, or you wait until it's all over. Um, that this would really only apply to the purple bags, um, for a limited time. That was my intention.
So can I ask a follow-up?
Please.
So as long as I can fit it in a bag, whether it's a contractor bag, or, or anything that passes for a bag, then it's picked up?
You got it. And that, and that's, and that's my fear about the increased tonnage, because people do exactly what you're saying. So I think one of the, the, Counselor Kennesaw, and I see you, I'm sorry. I'll get right to you, I promise. Um, so I think, Counselor Hatfield, to, to, to get to your point as well, we need that week to really, really remind people that you've got to still please recycle. This is not, we're not telling people not to recycle. In fact, we are encouraging people to still rec- rec- recycle responsibly, uh, because that does not increase our tonnage if we do that.
Can I do one more quick follow-up? A little commercial for the fact that our great staff in General Services also help us get access to composting bins. So for folks who want to reduce their waste even more, um, they should be, I'm happy to help people, but they should be in touch with General Services, because for a very low cost, you could be putting your food waste to work in your backyard. Thank you.
Good comment. Um, Counselor Kennesaw. Can you unmute yourself?
I'm trying.
There you go. Oh, here we go.
Okay, you, you with me?
With you.
Okay. Um, a couple of things that I'm thinking about are, how are we gonna notify the, uh, residents? Would it be, uh, direct mail? Uh, and also, um, making sure that they know they have to bag whatever they bag it in, because we used to dump garbage in barrels. And, uh, I just think it needs to be made clear that you do have to bag your trash.
Okay. Good, uh, thank you, that's good. Uh, Counselor Champlin.
Your Honor, um, I applaud you for, for being responsive to, uh, uh, the folks who have expressed concern about using purple bags during this time. I, I, I only hope that everybody understands, as, as Counselor, uh, Hatfield mentioned, that, uh, the purple bags are a use of fee, so that those who generate a lot of garbage pay more, and those who don't generate a lot of, of trash pay less. Uh, and this is the, what we're gonna do now is the equivalent of charging everybody across the city through their property taxes, the same amount for their water and their wastewater treatment, regardless of whether they leave the faucet on all day, or whether they're very prudent, uh, about the use of their, uh, of their water. Uh, I, uh, I, I, I am as annoyed as anybody else about the, the purple bags. Um, and, uh, and again, I, I think anything we can do to relieve stress, uh, during this very, very trying time, uh, is a good thing, but I just hope that people understand the underlying, uh, the underlying philosophy and the economics of the, of the, the purple bags. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, well said. Uh, Counselor Knight.
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. I appreciate it. I am, uh, big supporter of the purple bags. I think it's a, been overwhelmingly successful program for a number of different reasons. We find ourselves in some unique and trying times. I think it's appropriate to be responsive. And, uh, we will have, I will have, uh, Solid Waste Advisory Committee and Fiscal Policy Advisory Committee look at the impact of this, and we'll come back with some, uh, recommendations for the future, and how we can bridge that gap, or otherwise make this work. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Fennessey.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for trying to come up with a creative idea to address an issue that I know has been raised with a number of us. Um, you, you cited to us, um, potential fiscal impacts. I'm just wondering, um, if we can get some more information about the assumptions that those were built upon? Um, because, uh, I'm, I'm wondering to what extent we factored in the potential in, increased tonnage.
Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to, Mr. Manager.
We looked at, I believe it's about thirty percent increase in potential tonnage. So one of the, one of the issues that you'd be looking at, and that's what, what I think folks have seen, um, in terms of total tonnage. Counselor Fennessey, uh, you weren't on the council when the, the bag program was put into place, but there's dramatic reduction in tonnage. Um, some of it from, uh, people recycling more, some of it, um, you can imagine a lot of trash coming in from out of town, uh, that all of a sudden just disappeared. And it was, uh, as Counselor Nian said, it was a tremendous, tremendously successful program. So we're thinking you might have a little slippage on that, and therefore there'd be increase in tonnage, but also an increase in pickup, because you remember the, the, with our contractors, they're, they're set up to pick up so much tonnage as they go along on their routes. If you then put that much more tonnage on the routes, even though, because we've got split-body trucks, you're not gonna be able to be as efficient, uh, with the trucks that you have deployed. So you might have to have more, uh, staffing and, and costs related to, oh, actually the, the pickup of the trash and the amount of trash itself, the disposal cost. Did that answer the question?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Warner.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think that I will support this, um, moratorium for the six weeks or so that it would be in place. I think by that time, hopefully, we'll have, uh, be somewhat back to normal, but who really knows? Um, it's an extraordinary circumstance in which we find ourselves, so I support the temporary aspect of it. But if we recall when we first started the program, we were pretty quick in terms of its implementation. So after a few weeks, if somebody came home and their, um, trash was not in a purple bag, it was sitting at the end of the driveway, and they got the message. So I think we're gonna find ourselves, uh, back in some education aspect again. People have really gotten used to this. It's kind of been their muscle memory, so to speak. Um, once you get out of it, people, I, I think they're gonna really, well, what is this really gonna happen again? You know, I didn't really get the message. So I think we're gonna have to be prepared to do something like that again, uh, with a little bit of, um, transition. But, but pretty quickly after we are back in the regular mode, um, if somebody puts their trash out after a couple of weeks and it's not the proper, um, bag, uh, they'll get the message again when they come back, uh, hopefully, and they'll do it next time.
Thank you, thank you. Um, Counselor Bouchard.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I definitely support this proposal. I think anything we can do in this, um, time of uncertainty with so many of our citizens, um, at home without receiving paychecks and, and just the stress of the times, that, um, not having to, uh, the purple bags, uh, the cost, I, I think, um, I think it's a wise thing for us to do, and I think as long as, as Counselor, uh, Warner, Warner, uh, mentioned, uh, you know, we do a good job of making people, uh, our citizens know that this is temporary. And I think too, um, it will, um, I think, I think the citizens of Concord are really, uh, really love our city, and so I, 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 I think they'll appreciate this and they'll understand when we go back to the purple bags, that, you know, why we're doing it, we're to save money, that people pay for their trash. But I think right now, in the time that we're in, to take this little breather and give people, um, time without having to use a purple bag, I think it's a very wise move. So I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Counselor Keach. Counselor Keach, are you on mute?
I am, I apologize. Uh, the other consideration we ought to think about is, uh, recycling is no longer, uh, the moneymaker. It used to be, or not moneymaker, but it's, 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 it's a cost to the city now. Um, and I'm not sure how that figures into the whole thing, but, um, it's a consideration. Let, let me leave it there. Thank you.
But, uh, Mr. Manager, uh, to, to Counselor Keach's point, that, that cost, because of our contract, is not a burden on us. That's a burden on the trash companies, is that correct?
That's correct. As long as this contract goes on, that's correct.
So we're not making money where we're used to off recycling? We're not lose, we're not losing money. But we want to make sure, in my opinion, we want to really encourage strongly people to continue to recycle. It's important because it keeps our costs down.
That's correct.
Um, I had Counselor Fennessey. And then Counselor Kennesaw.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm gonna support this as a temporary measure, but I, I think we should also encourage people, not only to recycle, but those people who have supplies of purple bags, um, who have the ability to continue to use the purple bags, I think we should encourage them to do so, because the more we use them now, the, the less of a hole we'll be in, in six or eight weeks. I understand not everybody has the capabilities or abilities to, uh, to continue doing so, but I would strongly encourage those who do to continue to use the purple bags.
Thank you, I think it's a really important point. Uh, Counselor Kennesaw.
I, whoops.
You're good, we can hear you.
Okay, um, I just wanna say, right now, we have a process of, you know, when people leave sofas and stuff out on the front of their houses or on the curb, it gets tagged, and supposedly, uh, if it's not removed, the, the, uh, the, uh, garbage collectors will have it moved, and then the, the owners are charged for that removal. Doesn't always work, but I'm just wondering if we, if when we, um, go back to the purple bags, would there be a similar procedure where you, where you would tag, uh, non-purple bags? That they will not be picked up, you know, in, in a week or whatever? Would that be a process that you would use?
Mr. Manager?
Yes.
Oh, good answer. Uh, and the other thing I, I just wanna, uh, urge is for the Solid Waste Committee to look at clean recycling, because if we were doing clean recycling, there would be a market for, uh, the recycled goods. Right now, we're contaminating, uh, paper and so forth, so that it can't be sold. So I would recommend they take a close look at that.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Bouchard.
Uh, wait, I forgot the lower of my hand, sorry. But, uh, on the recycling, I read an article this morning, uh, Portland, Maine, and, uh, I don't know, it, that article said that, uh, um, some, uh, back to the clean recycling, that some items have, um, are increasing in price, um, due to, um, packaging, because there's a great need for the fiber to making paper and boxes and things, because of all the shipping and everything that's going on. So just throwing that out there, but I still support temporarily removing the, um, paper bag, the purple bags. Thank you. I'll try the lower of my hand.
Okay, um, I have no one else, I do. Uh, you put your hand back up, Counselor. Okay, with that, I don't see anybody else that says their hand up. Um, does somebody want to make a motion?
I do. I move that we, oop. Sorry. Okay.
Counselor Matson, what do you think?
To, uh, accept the, uh, proposal to, um, have a, a temporary moratorium on the use of paper ba, uh, purple bags.
Second.
Thank you very much. And just for clarification, that would begin on next Monday, the twentieth.
And go to the end of the executive order, the governor's executive order? Is that correct?
Yeah, one, it would be in effect until one week after.
Great.
There's a chance. Mr. Manager?
Did you, um, not to complicate things, because it's getting late, um, but the, um, did you want to put a limit on the number of bags that are put out? In the past, we've done things, you know, for example, with leaves, we've done five bags. The average family will probably put out one or two bags of, with purple bags. If we, if we maybe set a limit at, say, five bags, that way we wouldn't, um, get overrun by, by too much? Or do you just leave it, leave it to the individual?
Look, I don't think this, this is my personal opinion. Uh, I, this was not to be really simple, just not complicated at all, and I, I think just-
Why didn't you say anything?
Do a simple, you know, I, I think Counselor Fennessey said, if you can use purple bags, go ahead and use them. If you can't, you can't, but I think it's important that the council recognize that we are listening, that we are concerned about people who've lost their jobs, people having money crisis, and people's worried about their health. I think that's what this is about, and, uh, I fully recognize, and I am very cognizant of the potential financial impact this is gonna have. Uh, I, what I heard from Counselor Nian is that the Solid Waste Advisory Committee is gonna deal with that going forward in the future. And, uh, I think he's gonna come back, the committee will come back with some excellent recommendations on how we can proceed. But, um, you heard from, uh, Counselor Hatfield that you can continue to compost. Um, there, there are a lot of things you can continue to, to recycle, et cetera. But I, I, I really believe in, let's just keep this simple. But clearly, I'm but one, so if anybody else has an opinion, please feel free.
We should follow the K- Kiss principle.
Uh, Counselor Fennessey.
I think we should limit it to five.
Oh, I thought you, I thought you were high-fiving me, I'm sorry.
No, 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 five. Five should be the number. Uh, I, I just don't want it to be an invitation to people to throw out everything in their house.
Well, okay, so, so here's why I didn't want to pick a number. So I'll use X, um, uh, you know, brand, and it'll be, you know, a fifteen-gallon. And then somebody else, and I put out five of those, and then somebody picks, they're gonna use a thirty-gallon, uh, excuse me, a, a forty-gallon, and they're gonna put out five of those. And I, I just, we could get into a real game as to what size bag you use. So that's why I didn't pick a number, but I would hope people would be responsible and not... Maybe I'm wrong. Maybe people are just gonna completely take advantage of this, and it's gonna be an absolute failure. But that's the, that's the roll of the dice. I don't think Concord people and citizens will do that. It's, maybe I'm being optimistic. Anybody else would like to limit the number to five?
No, I'd like to move the question, though.
Okay. Okay, so we do have a motion pending before us. Uh, is everybody clear on the motion? Mr. Manager, are you clear? Okay, so, um, Madam Clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Counselor Bouchard.
Yes.
Mayor Boule.
Yes.
Counselor Champlin. Counselor Fennessey.
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton.
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield.
No.
Counselor Keach.
Yes.
Counselor Kennesaw. Counselor Kennesaw.
Yes.
Counselor Kretovic.
Yes.
Did I skip Counselor Keach? I'm so sorry.
I know, you got me. It was a yes.
Counselor Kretovic. Counselor Matson.
Yes.
Counselor Nian.
Yes.
Counselor Pierce.
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins.
Yes.
Counselor Todd.
Yes.
And Counselor Werner.
Yes.
So the motion passes 14 to 1.
Okay, both agree with 14 to 1. Thank you very much, I appreciate everybody's indulgence, the discussion. The other piece I had in new business was simply, in one of the most pressing issues is preparation in terms of the situation we're in right now. And with that, I just wanted to say thank you to the manager and your whole team for sending out and providing us with significant amount of information of what is going on at City Hall. I think that's very helpful. But with that, in terms of being prepared for what could or might happen, and hopefully doesn't, I did ask the manager to look at all the possibilities of what we need to be doing. So with that, I want him to talk a little bit about the fire department and how we are preparing.
Thank you, Your Honor. So you'll, discussing with the, with the mayor about different ideas, you'll also see on your item, when we get to suspense, you'll see this in, in writing. But we started this, the research on this, and we were able to, because of suspense item, add this just, just today, as a matter of fact. So here's the idea, and what we would like to do is the, put in execution a COVID-19 pandemic response ambulance that would operate 24 hours a day. This vehicle has been prepped, this is one of our reserve. As you know, we have three online ambulances. We have two in reserve, so we take one of those reserve ambulances, we prep it for high-risk procedures we've undertaken in this process, and it would contain additional PPE, personal protective equipment, and a battery-powered decontamination fogger. And the reason for this is, you can imagine every time we go out for a call, the fire department goes out for a call, and it's a potential COVID response call, or you find out after the fact that somebody had been tested, or it was awaiting results, or potentially already was tested positive. When that ambulance comes back, you have to decontaminate it along with the folks who worked on it, and it takes a long time before that gets back out on the street again. Well, when you only have three, that can really delay our response times to certain events. So based on that, in working with other city staff, we've set up trigger points for how this will work, because this was not put as part of your original budget. So what we do is, under the community outbreak COVID-19, if there's an outbreak in an assisted living facility or a large residential complex, this would go into effect, this, this ambulance would roll. If Concord Hospital was near or at capacity, or even above capacity, if NHTI, the Alternative Care Site, starts to receive patients, that means it's really ramping up. If there was a surge of COVID-19 positive test cases in Concord, or the call volume reaches the point where the three ambulances are out straight, and due to the decontamination issues, that they're out straight for extended period of time, then I would be contacted by the fire department, and I would make a determination whether to authorize this fourth ambulance to go out. Now, there's a cost associated with that. We've looked at, for the rest of this fiscal year, that being just about under $70,000. When you look at suspense item number two, there is federal dollars available, so you can see under suspense item two, when we get there, we're putting in a request, and we believe will be, not only a request, but also an appropriation of $117,000 for COVID-related issues. We essentially would like to be able to, if we end up employing this ambulance, we'd have these additional revenues to offset that cost. So this is something I think we need to do. I, I think I believe I need to have it available immediately. And there's dollars in the budget to do this in the existing budget because of what we have. But in case it does get a little more expensive, we do have an offsetting revenue coming in. So I just wanted to inform you of that, thank the mayor for his direction and his support in putting this together. And really, the fire department is, is the driver behind coming up with the concept of how this would work. And I just wanted to inform you, this is what we'd be doing, and hopefully get your support.
Thank you, I appreciate you forward-thinking about that. And obviously, we want to be ready and support our departments, so I think that's, I appreciate that. Counselor Bouchard, here are your handles.
Oh, no. Sorry.
Okay, no problem. Does anybody have any questions for the manager about that? Seeing none, okay. Does anybody other have any new business?
Oh, wait, I do. I'll raise my hand.
Counsel Bouchard?
I just want to take a moment to let the, anyone who's listening or watching know that the Boys and Girls Club is doing, wait, we haven't moved, we have to vote on this.
Nope, we're still on, we're still on business. We don't need to vote on it, because it, it's the manager's prerogative, it's not really our prerogative, because it works within the existing budget, it's more operational. But I just wanted everybody to know that if you are questioned, that anybody is concerned that our fire department's not prepared, we are fully prepared. So, okay, with that, it takes us to unfinished business. I don't believe I have anything coming off except item 43. We took this item up in item 37 and item 20, both the fees and the report. So I think we can dispose of item 43 if, if there's a will to do that.
I move that we take 43 off the suspense item.
Motion is made by Counsel Anian, seconded by? Counsel Champlin. Counsel Champlin. So we have a motion to remove this from the table. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counselor Champlin?
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Keach?
Yes.
Counselor Kenneson? Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Matson?
Yes.
Counselor Anian?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Werner?
Yes.
Okay, with that, motions approved to take it off the table. I would entertain a motion, and I guess it would be motion most likely to not accept the report, since we've dealt with it in two other items tonight.
Counsel Anian moves not to accept the report.
Counselor Kretovic seconds.
Counsel motion, motion is made by Counsel Anian, seconded by Counsel Kretovic. Any comments, questions? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counselor Champlin?
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Keach?
Yes.
Counselor Kenneson? Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Matson?
Yes.
Counselor Anian?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Werner?
Yes.
Thank you very much, the motion's adopted. That takes us down to comments and questions by the counselors. Anybody have anything they'd like to share tonight? First hand up was Counselor Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is my fourth meeting as a city counselor, and I continue to be impressed, and I appreciate the thoughtful discussions that this body always has. So I, I want to thank you, and, and let's all keep up the good work. I did have one other item I wanted to bring up, and I'll bring it up at a later date, and that was regard, with regards to the Blue Bag Program and roadside pickup. But I'll save that for next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bouchard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to, I just want to thank all the citizens of Concord, and I'm sure all of us do, because when I've been, you know, out to the grocery store getting the essentials, it's just amazing how everyone is just so patient, so kind, so helpful, and so respectful of each other. And it's just been great to see how as a community, we're all pulling together in this crisis. And I'd also like, the Boys and Girls Club is actually doing hot meals Monday through Friday. They do it at the Boys and Girls Club at their site on Bradley Street, and they also are having hot meals Monday through Friday, also at the Immaculate Heart of Mary Church on Loudoun Road, and they serve hot meals. It's a curbside, but you can come pick up your meals from Monday through Friday from 4:00 to 5:30. So it's, I'd just like to get the word out there so more people know that there are hot dinners available on both sides of the city, Monday through Friday between 4:00 and 5:30, and it's a curbside pickup, free. Delicious, yummy.
Thank you. Counselor Keach?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just want to comment that I want to acknowledge the efficiency and ease of this format, and hopefully it goes forward, because things go quicker.
Okay, Counsel Champlin?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll just note to Counselor Keach, it's 9:17. Your Honor, I had the opportunity to sit in on a web conference that was sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce and a number of other organizations. This week featured Dr. Christopher Forrester, if I'm pronouncing his name correctly, from Concord Hospital, who's been, I believe, coordinating the overflow facility at NHTI. And I, I was just, wanted to mention that I was so impressed with the depth of his knowledge and with the extent of the preparations that Concord Hospital has made in the event that, that we do experience a surge, and that we do need extra facilities. And by way of that, I would just like to give a shout out to all of our medical personnel and all of our first responders in the city, who are just doing an exemplary job, I think, during a very difficult time. We, we all should be thankful for them. The second thing I would mention is, I would note that our, the founders of our country and the Constitution ensured that we have a free press, understanding and recognizing the importance of an independent press in keeping the political figures feet to the fire, so to speak. And even though we, from time to time, have adversarial relationships with members of the press, I think it's worthy of note that our local paper is struggling right now with the lack of advertising, and that there is on their website an opportunity for citizens to make an additional contribution to support the paper if they don't subscribe already, or even if they do subscribe. So I think it's important that we have a, an active press in the city, and I just ask people to consider supporting our local paper during this difficult time. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Counsel Fennessy? I see you, Counsel Kenson, I see you.
Oh, okay, I thought you said Fennessy. I just want to commend the city for its response to our homeless population. I think you've gone out of your way to, to be helpful during this time of crisis. I also want the, I'm a volunteer at the Friendly Kitchen, and we're cooking up lots of meals for curbside pickup, and I just wanted folks to know that.
Thank you very much. Counsel Fennessy?
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to thank the city manager and the members of our city staff who are working very hard. We've got a lot of hard-working people, we've gotten a lot of information about all the great preparations that the city's been doing over the course of the past month to get us prepared. Hopefully, we won't have to implement some of these things, but I think they've, they've been doing a lot of things behind the scenes that many members of our community have no idea about. And so I'd like to thank them for all their hard work. I'd also like to echo Counselor Champlin's, shout out to our healthcare workers in this time of crisis. But I think a special shout out needs to go to all the people who are working at grocery stores and convenience stores and gas stations. These people are probably exposed to the virus more than anybody except for healthcare workers at this present time, and, and they show up to work. And, you know, my experience has been, they, they've been great, and I think they are owed a great deal of appreciation from all of us in the community.
Thank you. Well said, Counsel Hatfield?
Thank you. I wanted to add my thanks to the city manager and all of the city staff. We're lucky to have the team that we have who help us do meetings like this and do so much behind the scenes, and we really appreciate you. And I also wanted to echo Counselor Bouchard's shout out to the community. I have been seeing response online that is just unbelievable between Facebook and the Nextdoor app. People are helping their neighbors, people they don't even know, in just such amazing ways, giving, giving away masks that people are sewing by hand, helping people with all sorts of things, and it's just, it's been really great to watch. And lastly, I, I want to recognize the work of the Conservation Commission and the people in our community who have created the amazing trail system that we have that is getting a lot of use right now. And I just want to remind people, when you head out to the trails, have a backup, because there have been a couple of times when I've, I've headed out and the parking lot was full, and there was parking along the road, and I went to my second choice. There are lots of options out there, and it's great to see people getting out.
Thank you. Good advice. Counselor Rice Hawkins, please.
Hi, I want to let folks know that the census is going to extend the deadline for self-response rates. Concord's doing pretty well so far nationally. The reporting has been at 48.1%. New Hampshire, across the state, is 45.9. Concord comes in at 51.8, which is great, and especially in times like right now. It's really important that we have the federal dollars allocated to our city that we need for our emergency response plans in the future. I also wanted to add on to Counselor Bouchard's note about food resources, that anybody who needs dates and locations for food access, if you search for New Hampshire Food Map online, UNH has put together a statewide food map for access to both meals and, and pantries that have popped up across the state. And for the masks that Counselor Hatfield mentioned, just a special shout out to the great crew over at Kent Street Coalition, a local grassroots organization that's been leading the production and delivery of hundreds of masks across the city of Concord and area regions. One last thing, I did want to ask city staff to consider whether or not it would make sense to have some temporary loading zones outside of essential businesses downtown, knowing that we've got restaurants that are open and people are coming just for pickup, takeout meals. I think it's not in our best interest to have folks who don't have the electronic means to do, pay by phone, going up and touching the meters more. Nor does it make sense when they're only there for a five-minute exchange to ask them to go do that, when we want to encourage folks to go to those businesses. So I'd like city staff to take a look and see if it would make sense to have a handful of spots designated in front of some of those essential businesses or on streets that have several of those businesses, or people are only going to be in and out. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Kretovic?
Thank you, Your Honor. My two dogs have been extraordinarily quiet through this whole entire meeting. The cat has been a bit of a distraction. I know with everything that's going on in the community, and I certainly echo everything that all of our fellow counselors here have mentioned tonight. You can go online and you can register your puppies while you're home and you have something to do. This is something you can do online, and the city clerk's office would be glad to help you out. This is the month, every April, we do that, and I just don't want to let it go unsaid. Register your dogs, thanks.
Thank you. Counsel Todd?
Thank you, Your Honor. Echoing everything that everyone said already, obviously, our city manager has shown excellent leadership, as we would expect, and have come to appreciate from him, especially in this time of crisis. Also, our fire and police departments, and we've heard the results that domestic calls are up. And that's been a challenge for, for them especially, and we talk about people that are on the front line. So a big shout out to our fire department and police department staff for handling the extra volume and doing it with bravery, again, as we've come to expect. And finally, just want to add that I've heard from a number of residents in Pennacook who have really generously donated time and money to some of the local pantries we have here in Pennacook. There's the Immaculate Conception Church and the United Church of Pennacook that operate pantries. And also, in addition to that, have taken seriously the recommendations, and I also see them out and about in town, doing their necessary errands, protecting themselves and others by using masks and gloves. So thank you to everyone out there. errands, uh, protecting themselves and others, uh, using masks and gloves. So thank you to everyone out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Grady Sexton?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. And, uh, Counselor, um, Todd is absolutely correct that the rates of domestic violence are raising, arising here in Concord as well as communities across New Hampshire. And I think it's important for residents to know that the Crisis Center of Central New Hampshire is still available. They're now offering, uh, text and chat services for people who are unable to make telephone calls, uh, from within their homes. And the free and confidential line for the Crisis Center is, uh, one eight six six eight four one six two two nine. And, um, I hope that, um, it might be possible to add, uh, that information as well as the website to a prominent place on our, um, Concord website to make sure that people know that, um, help is still available.
Thank you very much. Um, did I miss anyone? Um, I will just simply, uh, share with you this. Um, you all did an excellent job saying probably much better than I could ever say, and how well the community has come together. The things that you've seen are the same things I've seen, and it's truly been amazing. But I would just add a few things. One, uh, I just wanted to thank you all. Uh, you all have been doing incredible constituent work. I know, because I get, uh, copied on everything. And, um, I hear from folks who have, uh, worked with each one of you at one point or another of the past month, and, uh, um, people in this community are very grateful for the response, um, that we've been able to provide. And that goes a lot to, uh, Mr. Spell and his whole team. And, uh, at the same time, they're trying to prepare for, uh, the worst. I think it's great that we're still able to continue to provide, uh, the essential services and, and, um, and a high quality too, if you, if you will. But I also have this, you know, I do run into people, and I suspect you do too, who are very skeptical of government, you know, it doesn't work, and you just get in the way, and all this. And I, I just have to share with you that, you know, I've, uh, I've had the opportunity over the past month to work with Senator, uh, Shaheen, Senator Hassan, uh, Congresswoman Custer, uh, Governor Sununu, uh, the county officials, and I think we should all be incredibly proud of how well all of our, um, our levels of government have really worked together. Uh, it has been amazing. When we've had a need in the city, uh, we've gotten really quick response from the governor's office. We've gotten a quick response from Senator Shaheen's office. There are, um, month, uh, weekly conference calls, um, with mayors and, uh, the governor's office. There are weekly calls with Senator Shaheen's office. Um, so I just hope that people in the community know that not only we, I think, um, you all are doing an incredible job, and what you're doing, and making sure that the people's voices are heard here in Concord, but, um, they're also being incredibly responsive at the state and federal level as well. So just want people to know that government does work occasionally, uh, and, uh, particularly here in Concord. So I'll share that. Uh, seeing no one else, Mr. Manager, do you have anything you want to share? I'm going to assume you asked, no?
I'm, I know, I'm also, thank you.
Okay, great. Um, so with that, it takes us to our suspense items. Um, can I get a motion to suspend the rules to take up item suspends one and two?
So moved.
Second.
Was made, uh, by Counselor Grady Sexton, Sexton, seconded by?
Each.
Each. Uh, with that, um, Madam Clerk, if you call the role, please.
Sorry about that. Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counselor Champlin? Counselor Fennessy?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Keach?
Yes.
Counselor Kennison?
Counselor Kennison votes yes.
Okay, Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Mattson?
Yes.
Counselor Nian?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
He's muted.
Yes.
Okay. Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
Okay, motion's adopted. Counselor Fennessy, what did that note say? I can't read it.
Unmuted. Unmute. It's, it's reversed, though. It's backwards.
By the way, whoever's playing the piano, I greatly appreciate. That's very nice, but. Okay, so we have, uh, two items before, suspense one, suspense two. I'll take a motion on, uh, suspense one.
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, motion's made by Counselor Nian, seconded by Counselor Mattson. The motion is to, uh, authorize to accept the grant funding that are handed to the Department of Safety, Emergency, Management and Performance Grant Program in the amount of six thousand dollars. That is understood? Okay, with that, is there any discussion? Madam, Madam Clerk, if you call the role, please.
Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counselor Champlin?
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Keach?
Yes.
Counselor Kennison? Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Mattson?
Yes.
Counselor Nian?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
And the motion's adopted fifteen to zero.
With usual accompaniment.
That's one?
With, with usual accompaniment.
Yes. Um, so with that, we have, uh, before item suspense two, is there a motion?
To move, to accept the?
I'm going to give this one, motion made by Counselor Mattson, seconded by Counselor Nian. The motion is to appropriate the sum of one hundred seventeen thousand dollars for equipment and overtime, and accepting the sum of one hundred seventeen thousand dollars in the Department of Justice. Urgency supplemental funding for this purpose. Everybody clear on the motion?
Yes.
Any discussion? Seeing none, with the music.
Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counselor Champlin?
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Keach?
Yes.
Counselor Kennison?
Counselor Kennison votes yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Mattson?
Yes.
Counselor Nian?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Yes.
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
With that, motion is adopted. Um, if I'm not mistaken, I believe that takes us to the end of our agenda. Mr. Manager, do you have anything?
Just, just for clarification on that last one, that is something you're going to have to, um, appropriate after public hearing next month. So this is, this is all great news. We'll have all the money in place. Uh, we're always going to, you should appropriate the money.
Thank you very much. Um, does anybody have anything else for the betterment of the organization?
I'll second Counselor Keach's motion to adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Uh, before we do that, prior to the vote, I'm going to simply say, I really appreciate everybody's patience. Um, it's, this has been an interesting, uh, um, unique challenge I've never experienced. And, um, I appreciate everybody's really attention and patience again. So thank you all, and, um, be safe, take care of yourself, hug your family a little tighter than you usually do, and love one another, okay? So with that, we have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Oh, actually.
Aye.
Apologies. Madam Clerk, if you call the role, please.
I would love to. Counselor Bouchard?
Yes.
Mayor Boule?
Yes.
Counselor Champlin?
Yes.
Counselor Fennessy?
Yes.
Counselor Grady Sexton?
Yes.
Counselor Hatfield?
Yes.
Counselor Keach?
Affirmative.
Counselor Kennison?
She said yes.
Counselor Kretovic?
Yes.
Counselor Mattson?
Yes.
Counselor Nian?
Yes.
Counselor Pierce?
Yes.
Counselor Rice Hawkins?
Yes.
Counselor Todd?
Sure, why not?
And Counselor Warner?
Yes.
All right, with that, thank you, everyone. Enjoy. Have a safe week. You too.
Thank you.
Bye, everybody.
Bye.